Members, good morning. We have a quorum. I call to order to special meeting of the Finance Committee. This meeting will run until twelve forty this afternoon. There will be two sessions in total. The purpose of these special meeting is to examine the estimates of expenditure in twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six of the administration to ensure that the provision sought will not be more than the uh than is necessary of the implementation of the policies. Please refer to the reply serial number on the top right hand corner of the reply. For example, T L B O O one in this session. If members cannot ask questions during this meeting, please submit a written question to the administration by seven P M. to the Secretariat. I now welcome Ms. Maybo Chan, the Secretary for Transport and Logistics. She is attending this meeting with her team. Members who would like to speak, please press the button to request to speak. Ms. Maybo Chan, the floor is yours. Thank you. Hong Kong has three types of ports, sea, land, and air. In this regard, the Transport and Logistics Bureau adopts a proactive, aggressive approach in developing shipping aviation and land transport. We aim to capitalize on our advantage of having strong support from our motherland and close connection with the world. We will also enhance our competitiveness while proactively integrating into our countries and the G B A's development. I'd like to speak on aviation, shipping, transport infrastructures, and logistics. I will speak to members on some highlights of our work in the coming year. On transport infrastructures, we will like we will adopt a dual innovation mindset in taking forward and implement a series of railway mass transit systems and major road projects. Local railway projects, the Tongchung Line Extension, Oyster Bay Station, Toomoon South Extension, Kootong Station, and Hongshui Q Station are under construction now. They will be completed gradually, starting from twenty twenty seven onwards. Advanced construction works from the Northern Link Main Line have also commenced with target completion by twenty thirty four. The government is also pressing ahead with the smart and green mass transit system projects. It is a new technology. We aim to invite tenders for the Kaia project this year and the East Kowloon and Hongshui Q Hua Chuen and Yunnan South New Development Areas Projects next year respectively. We aim to award the contracts in the following year. At the same time, we will also strive to commence the detailed planning and design of the South Island Line West Project within this year. In addition, we are also working on cross boundary railway projects. We have the vision of Greater Bay Area on the rail. We are working with the Shangji Municipality Government to take forward two projects. One, the Hong Kong Shangtun Western Rail and Hongshui Q Tianhai. We aim to start the investigation and design study this year. Whereas for the planning and design of the Northern Link Spur Line, it is expected to commence within this year. As for road infrastructures, the Central Kowloon Route will be completed within this year, while Route Six is expected to be fully commissioned next year as scheduled. On transport, we are reviewing several fees and penalties in relation to transport with the overall consideration of enhancing traffic management adhering to fiscal discipline and sustainability. We will review fees that haven't been adjusted for some years, including parking meter fees, fixed penalties for traffic offenses and tunnel tolls. We are conducting a re- review of these fees. Within the second quarter of this year, we aim to consult the panel on transport. As for the license fees for electric private cars, we are working with the Environment and Ecology Bureau to streamline the charging basis and structure. We want to closely keep pace with the advancement of E V technology and international practices. We also aim to complete the review as soon as possible. From the first of June twenty twenty five onwards, in order to ensure the financial sustainability of the Public Transport Fair subsidy scheme, the threshold of monthly public transport expenses incurred for receiving the subsidy under s- under the scheme will be raised from four hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, while the prevailing subsidy rate and cap will remain unchanged. We will be able to reduce our annual expenses. Next, on aviation, the Hong Kong International Airport three one ray system was commissioned at the end of last year. It marked new phase of development of our aviation industry. We will continue to expand our aviation network. We aim to at least work with ten aviation partners to have discussion to further expand our air connectivity. After we have removed restrictions, we have increased our overall capacity by at least sixty percent in relation to aviation. There are external changes. So we will focus on exploring new destination and flights, especially for Asian countries and so on. We will also be actively exploring other new destinations in South Americas, for instance. We will also expand the airport city to develop a new highlight project encompassing high end commercial or tourism and leisure activities. We want to attract more tourists to Hong Kong. We hope to inject a new economic impetus into the city. Apart from finalizing the equity acquisition arrangement of Zhuhai Airport at the end of last year, the A A H K Airport Authority will continue to press ahead with the sea air intermodal cargo transshipment mode with Zhongguang to continue to expand the influence of the Hong Kong International Airport. We aim to finish the construction of the permanent facilities within this year. In relation to the working group on developing low altitude economy, we announced the first batch of regulatory sandbox pilot projects last month, a total of thirty eight. Between April and June, we'll continue to put to test these regulatory sandbox pilot projects. Members of the public will see these drones flying around in Hong Kong. Together with my team, we will work with the district officers and explain to residents in the relevant areas. We're preparing to introduce legislative proposals to the Legco in around two months' time to expand the regulatory scope to cover more heavy weighting admin aircraft and to empower the Director General of Civil Aviation to, subject to the fulfillment of the safety of civil aviation, permit passenger carrying trial flights of advanced air mobility systems under specific conditions. This will lay a solid foundation for future low altitude passenger carrying flying facility activities. In promoting the development of Hong Kong as an international maritime center, the first key task at hand is to establish the Hong Kong Marine Time and Port Development Bureau by the middle of this year. We are working on setting up a task force. And we also want to enhance research, promotion, and manpower training in order to enable the industry to support the government in policy implementation more effectively. On enhancing port competitiveness, this is definitely high on our agenda. We will work with the industry to strengthen regional collaboration and global connectivity to attract more cargoes to use to Hong Kong Port. We will also drive the transformation and upgrading of our port through digitalization, smart development, and green transformation. I'd like to thank members of the Finance Committee for passing our port community system last month. We are taking forward this project at full steam. We are moving towards the full digitalization of the Hong Kong Port. We aim to implement this system in January next year. Different stakeholders will also be able to use this system to exchange information. At the same time, we can deepen our collaboration with other ports in the mainland. This will facilitate interfacing among us. On high value added maritime services, we will enhance the existing tax incentive for the shipping industry. This includes providing tax deduction for ship acquisition costs for shipless source under operating leases as well as offering a half rate tax concession to eligible commodity commodity traders to attract them to operate in Hong Kong. By so doing, we will drive the development of maritime services. The legislative amendments in this regard will be introduced to the Legislative Council in the first half of next year. We want to inject a new impetus to the maritime services in Hong Kong. On going green, the action plan on green maritime fuel bunkering was published last year. On the fourteenth of February, that is the Valentine's Day, we had the first liquefied natural gas bunkering operation in Hong Kong. Different commercial operations were conducted for twice. After the L N G bunkering operation, we will announce our guidelines on green methanol bunkering. We aim to make it happen this year. At the same time, we will develop green maritime fuel storage facilities on a site in Tengi South. We will invite the industry to submit expressions of interest. We will work hand in hand with the industry to provide a solid foundation in relation to going green. On logistics, that is close to the heart of many members. The first of the logistics sites in the vicinity of the Kuai Ten Container Terminal was disposed of by public tender in February this year. In Hongshui Q Hua Chuen N D A, in the logistics sites over there, we want to adopt a new op- operation mode, which is an industry led approach. We want to attract leading prices to come to Hong Kong to establish a foothold. We want to attract industries to establish a cluster or an ecosystem. When it comes to aviation, a France company signed an agreement with Hong Kong. We want to provide support in relation to facilities, sites, and manpower. We're moving towards this direction. Globally, there are challenges to trade and logistics. So we are focusing more on anthropol. In relation to transshipment cargo throughput, we want to expand um our transshipment cargo to intramodal transshipment mode. We will introduce the legislative proposal to the Legco for scrutiny. We thank members for their interest in transport and logistics matters. My team and I will be answer questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. Twenty-three members in total have pressed the button to request to speak. The lineup is Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Michael Tian, Mr. Bill Tang, Mr. Kitson Yang, Mr. Lo Chong Hong, Mr. Edward Lau, Mr. Chen Pu Liang, Mr. Frankie Yik, Mr. Dennis Lang, Mr. Shang Hai Long, Mr. Lee Chen Kang, Mr. Andrew Lam, Mr. Emman Wong, Mr. Chen Siu Hong, Dr. Lo Wei Kwok, Mr. Gary Zhang, Professor Chow Man Kong, Dr. Ben Chen, Mr. Perry Yu. The twentieth member is Mr. Jeffrey Lam, twenty-first, Dr. Starry Lee, twenty-second, Professor William Wong, and twenty-third, Mrs. Regina Ip. We have ninety-one minutes left. I guess we can take questions from twenty-one to twenty-two members. If we manage our time well, then Professor William Wong and Mrs. Regina Ip will be able to ask questions as well. Four minutes each, questions and answers included. First member, Dr. Johnny Ng.
Thank you, Chair. I want to ask about zero six eight on online hailed cars. The reply said we would improve the quality of point-to-point transport services and five taxi fleet licenses were issued last year. And they are to commence service within a year. They are to start services in July, the latest. And there are two taxi fleets that have already started their operations. But in the morning, I have tried and I cannot call taxis. It is not ideal, of course. Would the administration have more resources to support the taxi fleets to improve the experience? If we can't achieve the intended effect, will we have some updates to the framework to regulate online car hailing platforms? It is all about facilitating citizens commute. If people cannot get their taxis, it will definitely affect them going to work and going off work. That's my first question. The second question is on automated autonomous vehicles. We have many pilot projects now, but from what I got in feedback, they do not rely only on computer fishing. They would rely on, say, smart traffic lights or even six G satellite remote sensors. But I haven't seen the administration publish relevant information or even consider the relevant technologies. Can you at least start conducting study so that we won't be lagging behind? Autonomous vehicles are a trend, so we need to try to get there. We did get the zero six eight question for point-to-point transport services. Uh, that is the reply number. Oh, that is Miss Dorian Kong's question. Is that correct? Yes. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you. First, on taxi fleet. They are to commence operations by July, as the members said. And they have been actively preparing for their operations if they have not started. I think I can say this for the administration in the Smart Traffic Fund for fleets to incorporate technologies into their operations. We would provide some support. At boundary control points at the airport, we have also reserved embarking and disembarking spots for online car hailing platforms. We do understand that there has been feedback on customer experience and there is definitely room for improvement. As I said before at previous council meetings, we, of course, want to have a unified platform to facilitate citizens to call taxis. And I'm glad to tell you that we are making preparations to provide citizens with a better experience. And we are also moving forward in terms of the regulatory framework for online held car platforms. And we hope to introduce our proposals within this year. On autonomous vehicles, we do have some advanced frameworks for autonomous vehicles right now. On top of that, we need to make sure there is ancillary facilities. As the member said, we need to have, say, smart traffic lights. The Transport Department is currently preparing a study and try to promote pilot projects in on autonomous vehicles. Once we have more details, we will share them with members and we would consult members on this. Recently, we took part in a signing ceremony of the O A C S with many companies. And many of these companies are in autonomous vehicles or related technologies. We will actively lead with O A C S and the companies, hoping to provide more support. Thank you. Mr. Michael Tian, I want to follow up on one oh seven. We talked about having a comprehensive review of tolls. We have also seen some figures on toll revenues. And the round table would have the following views to express for the three harbor crossings. They are earning five hundred thirty to six hundred seventy million dollars on a user pay principal. Tolls need to be reduced, but we object to this because there will be serious congestion on the Hong Kong Island after that. Fortates Can Tunnel, they are earning two hundred sixteen million dollars. Lion Rock Tunnel is earning one hundred thirteen million dollars. And the Aberdeen Tunnel is suffering a minor loss, so you can add, I mean, you can increase tolls. And Shing Moon Tunnel has a significant loss of twenty-eight million dollars. Another tunnel is also suffering a significant loss. So these would need to decrease their tolls. Now, for the nine three free tunnels, they are all suffering losses. The worst is Central Bypass. They are losing one hundred fifty million dollars. So you should be charging tolls. You should start from something small, say, three dollars or five dollars in order to recover the costs. Then you will be implementing your principles. The round table's view is that we should be recovering the costs for Lion Rock Tunnel and Tate Scan Tunnel during peak hours. There should be tolls, otherwise there will be serious congestion. For other times, there should be much lower tolls. If it is free, you are already having a profit. Then I would support not charging tolls. If you are going to have congestion during peak hours and you will increase the tolls and you'll make a profit, that I do not object to. We will soon recover the Thailand Tunnel. And if we are to make a profit of three hundred and twenty million dollars during peak hours, we should decrease the tolls to make sure we are only recovering the costs. Otherwise, it's like you're contradicting your intent and there is just no rational arrangement of all the tunnels. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Ms. Michael Tian for expressing your views. I think for major roads and tunnels, the relevant tolls, there are different perspectives, and I'm glad to have taken your perspective. We will have a comprehensive review on the different considerations and suggestions to formulate a strategy. We hope that within the second quarter, we will consult the panel on transport. We hope to be comprehensive. There are four principles in mind. We need to make sure we are managing the traffic because for major roads and tunnels, they play a key role in traffic. So we need to make sure we are managing the traffic. We are also adopting the principle of users pay. We will have reference to operational data, but that will not be it. We have to consider other factors that are a- at play. We also need to consider the principles of public transport first and efficiency first. And that is exactly what we did when we talked about recovering the control of Thailand Tunnel, what arrangements we are going to implement. So for those that are free and we are charging tolls or otherwise, we need to achieve the principles. And that is the goal we have in mind. There are two tunnels that have not had their tolls adjusted in thirty-four years, say, Shing Moon Tunnel and Aberdeen Tunnel. We will try to achieve the principles of users pay and cost recovery so as to ensure financial viability. Thank you, Mr. Tang Kapiu. I want to first ask about one five one, Ms. Jovi Chan's question. On lost trip of buses, we have seen a decrease. It is now at two point five percent. Do we have any K P I's to show that we have our requirements for buses to not have lost trips as much as possible? But I also want to say that we have seen significant figures for complaints for service standards. We have twenty-seven thousand odd cases. In twenty twenty-four, we have thirty-one thousand odd cases. So we see an increasing number of cases. What does the government think about this? I am also concerned about another question on one three one. And another question also on the smart and green mass transit systems. I understand that the government would like to adopt the B O T model when tendering. And it is said that the schedule would be that this will be completed in twenty twenty-six. If it is not ideal for the bittering situation that we're not receiving any ideal bits, would you consider having the government build the relevant systems? Thank you, Secretary. I'll first answer the question on smart and green mass transit systems, and I'll let the Commissioner for Transport answer the question on buses. For the smart and green mass transit systems, we have invited expressions of interest earlier. And we have received quite positive feedback for the line in Kowloon East. We have received some expressions of interest from the mainland and overseas operators. For both construction and operation, we have seen different combinations. We are conducting studies into the technologies as well as financial viability, such as the construction and operational costs. As Mr. Tang may know, we have been communicating with district stakeholders and Legco members on this. Apart from making sure that we provide convenience to the public, we need to make sure we are minimizing the costs while covering more areas and accommodating more passengers. This will all play into the future financial viability of the systems in future. This will also help with the fiscal viability of the government. We not only have to think about the systems, we need to also make sure we are maximizing the use of depots. We will try to develop properties on top of depots. We will consider this to make the project projects more attractive to operators. We try not to use public money. This is our goal. Adopting the B O T model would be more flexible and interested operators can do some calculations to see if their projects will be financially viable. And by inviting expressions of interest, we can gauge more feedback and have more concrete suggestions. I'll now let the Commissioner for Transport to answer the next question. Excuse me. I think in future, if all of the members would ask for more than five minutes, can you provide written response on the question on buses next, Mr. Yin Winkit?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on two oh one one two, two oh four, three questions in total. First question about the uni- universal accessibility program. I thank the administration's efforts. It provides a lot of convenience to members of the public. I will arrange um for the public to express their gratitude to the government. In relation to another project, there will In relation to another project, there will be a delay of one and a half years. Will you increase the figure from one percent to ten percent in order to prevent any abusive tenders? This will only lead to problems. Well, you can give me a written reply. We don't have enough time. Next, I'd like to follow up on T L B one one two. It's about the smart and green mass transit system in Kaikang. In paragraph two of your reply from Kaikang to Yautung, this is our suggestion. You mentioned technical challenges in the alignment, but I'd like to say that we have already conducted a studies. A total of ninety two million dollars were spent on the study. How complex are the roads in Kun Tong in Kaikang? You have a very good understanding of the difficulty. So I hope that the government will quicken its pace to finish the phase two of the study. So residents will enjoy better transport connectivity and services. If we want to develop CBD two, we do need traffic connectivity. You cannot ask members of the public to walk from MTR stations to the CBD two area. It's not ideal. It's very serious in Hong Kong to see legal legally parked vehicles and um you mentioned in a replies that you're using sensor technology in Hong Kong. But there are smarter people who put a tab on these sensors, which make the sensors not working. A lot of vehicle maintenance workshops use this method. We shouldn't use fifteen or thirteen minutes per unit to charge two dollars. We need to use the other unit, say the indices of two. Say sixteen dollars for the first hour, for the second hour, thirty two dollars. This will increase the rate of using the parking meters. On the one hand, you can prevent abusive use of the parking meters, and on the other hand, you can also increase revenue for the government. My secretary, please choose one question. We don't have enough time for all questions. Well, I'll take the middle one. Thank you. Regarding the smart and green mass transit system in Kaikang, we very seriously consider the suggestion put by members. In the proposal, we have already added what member has mentioned. We tapped the pulse of the community and we have received quite diverse views. We not only have to take into account technical feasibility, but also financial feasibility or financial considerations. We do want to quicken our pace as well. So on system designs, we will study to retain flexibility. So upon completion of phase one, we may extend this the um coverage of the study to phase two. Next, Mr. Michael Look. I'd like to write on Mr. Michael Ting's question on T L B one oh seven. Mr. Michael Ting mentioned a concept user pays, and I'm against this principle. It's like a fishbowl theory, so to speak. Say Thailand Tunnel isn't expensive, isn't expensive enough, so let's increase the tunnel tolls for road harbor crossings. Said to Moon Chak Lab Kok Link and other tunnels used by anti-West residents, I don't agree with this method. We shouldn't do so. Next, I'd like to follow up on T L B oh oh three. A total of fifty two officers and seventy two point eight million dollars in the railways branch of the E M S D. All of these are professionals. They earn an average of one point four million dollars per year. I'm not casting doubts on the salaries, but why aren't there any other officers in addition to professionals? These professionals should be underpinned by other staff members as well. They do need the assistance of non-professionals. Otherwise, how can you monitor the service of the M T R C L? They said that they would adopt a risk-based approach to conduct investigations, inspections, and so on. Do you have sufficient manpower? I believe you should add more non-professionals to support professionals in the railway branch. A I is nowadays used to detect defaults or defects. Trade unions oftentimes said that some work is oftentimes subcontracted. Many companies send on locals to Hong Kong for repair and maintenance, so people in Hong Kong don't even need to learn the skills. We are worried about a succession gap in relation to skills which would affect the quality of repair and maintenance. Mechanic- mechanical defects are the main reasons listed in the paper. Did the railway branch tell the M T R C L what not to subcontract or outsource? This is a way to ensure the quality of services. Every time there is an accident, there is a huge impact on public, on the public. It affects members of the public. Mr. Pun, thank you. We have more professional engineers in the grade. There are a lot of different mechanical and electrical systems, C P R supply systems, track, and so on. Our professionals come from different professional backgrounds, electronic communication, mechanical, and so on. They are specialized in different realms. I understand members' concerns. For example, our engineers conduct more frontline inspections or frontline duties, whereas inspectors are responsible for carrying our inspections. We also commission consultancy companies to inspect the M T R C L, thereby supporting the work undertaken by the E M S D. In relation to risk assessment, do we use A I? Well, the railway system is quite complicated. We have cameras installed on trains and we use A I to conduct analyses to detect any dislocation or abnormalities. Then we will be reminded to carry out inspections and this will save more manual inspections. While in relation to outsourcing, the M T R C L uses the international guidelines. That is how they conduct repair and maintenance, whether undertaken by their staff members or outsourced staff members. They follow the same set of standards. In relation to high-risk practices or operations, we do say the same to the M T R C L. Tasks often being um outsourced are repetitive. That is the situation right now. Thank you. Mr. Albert Lau. I'd like to ask about O eight O and O eight one. Also, O eight two and one eight O. I'd like to ask about the railways in the northern metropolis. In the Executive Council, the Northern Link project has been approved, which means the construction works could commence within this year. It's slated to be completed in twenty thirty four. It's a letdown to me. It's about nine years from twenty thirty four from now, comparing with high-speed rail Hong Kong sections. They took eight years, Shatin Central Link between eight to twelve years. The Northern Link is quite a simple, quite a simple project comparing with the high-speed rail. Say the um high-speed rail Hong Kong section involving a tunnel of twenty K M's. But the Northern Link is only about ten point seven K M's. Shatin Central Link goes through bustling and crowded urban areas. And there are also other issues in Song Wong Toy. Said monuments and so on. So doesn't the government really accept the M T R's proposal to construct the Northern Link in nine years? Is it possible to make it work faster? Can we advance the commissioning of some stations earlier than twenty thirty four in relation to the spur line of the Northern Link? I'm glad to see that the commissioning works or the construction works can start in parallel. You are still carrying out investigation studies and you are confident that they could be completed in twenty thirty four. Is there any reason why the spur line will outpace the main line? Is it possible to expedite the construction of the Northern Link main line? Secretary, thank you, Mr. Everett Lau, for your questions. To compress the time and the costs, this has been our continuous tasks. Regarding the Northern Link project, the Executive Council has just given us the green light. This is a statutory procedure. In the second half of this year, we will be in talks with the M T R C L to reach an agreement. Cost, funding, time. We want to reach a consensus, a consensus on this. We want to share an updated target with the council. In relation to the spur line, it is a cross-boundary project. So we are still exploring the use of mainland resources, construction methods, or national standards. All these will help us move faster. Within this year, we want to start the detailed study or design rather. We are confident that we can move faster to commission the main line and the spur line at the same time. But we won't give up on the spur line either. There is interfacing between the main line and the spur line. We'll study the use of innovative elements to be put in the main line, whether just some sections of the main line or the entire main line. Then we may expedite the project. We're working very hard on it. When we have any update, after we have formed up the agreement, we will share with the council. Well, I'd like to follow up briefly, Chairman. May some stations be commissioned in phases? Well, Secretary, any brief response? Well, we've heard members' view. Point taken. On expediting the commissioning of some stations or in relation to the entire line, we're working very hard to achieve the best result. Next, Mr. Chen Xiu Hong.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chen Pu Leng, for letting me speak first. I'd like to follow up on T L B oh four one about low altitude economy. In twenty twenty five to twenty six, seven positions or permanent positions are recommended to be created to take forward work in relation to low altitude economy, including the regulatory sandboxes projects. Three supernumerary positions will also be kept. From twenty twenty six to twenty thirty, three time limited posts are recommended to be created to support the work in relation to low altitude economy. The low altitude economy is a mega project covering rules, laws, technology, manpower, land planning, commercial application, and so on. A lot of policy bureaus are covered. Manpower is needed to take forward the L A E low altitude economy. This is understandable. But the creation of seven permanent posts and a handful of time limited posts, is it sufficient for you to support the work of the L A E? I'd like to know the um job descriptions of the duties of the permanent posts. How will they support the work of the L A E? Are they on the technical front? Do they have sufficient power to develop the L A E? Low altitude operation system, system monitoring, information technology, A I system, do they have sufficient know-how?
I also want to follow up on one four nine, another of my question on autonomous vehicles. We have talked about for the cumulative trial mileage for items one to four for seven out of nine vehicles. The transport department does not have the relevant information. I don't quite understand why that is the case. Can the secretary explain why after we have issued permits to test our autonomous vehicles? Wouldn't you ask for such data from the companies, the cumulative trial mileage, what errors they had encountered? Or if you don't have the relevant information, how can you make sure the data collected during the projects can allow you to derive a conclusion that the projects are actually safe and feasible? Thank you. Secretary, first on low altitude economy, in the Civil Aviation Department, we will have several permanent posts that will specifically target the management of civil aviation. When we have more air, advanced air mobility systems, getting airworthiness certificates in the mainland, we need to make sure we're moving forward as well in terms of airworthiness. That's why we have some experts in airworthiness in the relevant posts. We also have some electronic engineers. We will soon be dealing with many A I and big data operations in civil aviation. We also need to work with relevant devices and components. And as Mr. Chan said before, the top level design is very important. Although we have already done some sandbox projects, we need to make sure in future we are interfacing with other Bay Area cities and conform to Bay Area standards. We have also experts from other departments outside the Civil Aviation Department. We will also work with the working group on developing low altitude economy led by the Deputy Financial Secretary and rely on their knowledge and expertise for the implementation. I'll see if, well, can you provide a brief response, Commissioner? On the other question, thank you. On the question, we have talked about for movement permits, they are just testing the projects on their own roads. But if they have attained funding from the government, say Smart Traffic Fund, for example, for item five, the project in Fairview Park or in an other, under another framework, they have been testing out projects in North Lantau and West Kowloon. We have to monitor their progress to see what we're going to do in the next stage, whether we'll expand road networks and whether we'll test out the carrying of passengers with these projects. We therefore would have information on cumulative trial mileage and their test findings for us to gauge whether they should continue with their projects. Thank you. Next, Mr. Frankie Yick. First of all, I want to ask about two one one. On illegal carriage of passengers for reward and enforcement on such. And for point five, I note that it says that the government is taking enforcement action, but then it seems that in a particular year, only forty seven enforcement actions were taken. And only a small number of vehicles were detained. It seems that it is it is not conforming to the principle of taking stringent enforcement action. Because every time according Because every time according to media reports, we would see a number of vehicles detained. So why are we taking such weak enforcement action? Second question is on one one four. It is also relevant to T L B. Two one eight on importation of labor. We are now very concerned about renewal. And I know that the renewals will not be automatic, but can the drivers be re-hired? I'm asking about this because the drivers have to receive training and they have to take tests. Some may have to take tests multiple times and the cost would have to be borne by the companies. If there is, we need a new batch of drivers, the cost can be very high for the trade. And we would have two to three batches every year. And if we have, say, a hundred, over a hundred drivers or a few hundred drivers leaving and we have to hire another batch, it will definitely affect public services. I hope the government can take this into consideration. For importation of labor in airport right now, we have some restrictions. We hope that the government can relax some restrictions. First on racial, right now, the racial is two locals to one imported worker. With the expansion of the airport, with the implementation of the three one-way system, with this ratio of two to one, we will not have enough labor. So can we have a ratio of one point five to one or one to one even? On drivers. For minibus and franchise buses, we have already filled up the quotas. But the trade expressed their wish to have even more workers. I understand that government is conducting a review. Can you make your announcements as soon as possible? Thank you. Thank you. Two questions, Secretary. Thank you, I'll be brief. On illegal carriage of passengers for reward. By motor vehicles, as the chief executive said, for point of point transport services apart from reforming taxis. We need to regulate online held car platforms. We will also take enforcement action. So this is a three-pronged approach. We need to make sure people comply with the law. We have the transport department working with the police force. And in this year, we have been taking continuous enforcement action. We will enhance public awareness on our enforcement actions in future. There may be a lag, so the information may not be updated because there has to be investigation done before we can publish the figures. On imported workers, we have been working with Mr. Frankie Yick and the relevant trades. We have indeed got feedback from the trade. On imported workers for the aviation industry and minibus and non-franchise buses. Non-franchise bus operators, they have given us positive feedback. And we did mention there is no automatic renewal clause. But as we got from the trade, drivers needed time to receive training and adjust. So we will think about whether we will promulgate some flexible arrangements to facilitate the relevant arrangements, but we need to be prudent. We will work with the L W and immigration department to make sure we achieve policy objectives while trying to provide convenience to the trade. On some positions, we will review the manning racial and see if there's any room for enhancement. Thank you. Mr. Dan Slung.
Thank you, Chair. I want to ask about zero nine three, a question asked by Mr. Lu Chong Hong. In the reply, it said. For the M A T F Maritime and Aviation Training Fund. In a particular year, six thousand people benefited. But it did not have a breakdown who are from the maritime industry and who are from the aviation industry. Also note in item ten. It is quite interesting. For. The shipping ship repair training incentive scheme, there were zero beneficiaries. But there was still an amount of subsidy being fifty eight thousand. Why is that? For item seven and eight, there were some scholarships. In item seven, it was a scholarship scheme and we have spent three hundred thousand on this. So that would mean each beneficiary got one hundred fifty thousand. And for the scholarship scheme in item eight, there were ten beneficiaries. But two point four nine eight million dollars were spent on this. This is a significant amount. How can we ensure these talents are retained in the industries? And do you have any justifications for providing them with a large amount? I also want to ask, we have spent fifty two million dollars on some on-the-job training allowance. How can we ensure there is effectiveness in providing fifty two million dollars in cash flow and requirement to the M A T F for the development of manpower? Thank you. Secretary. Thank you, member, for your questions. For the scholarship schemes under the M A T F, some are course oriented. Some would require students to be attached to companies. Some are internship schemes, some are incentive schemes. So the number of beneficiaries and the amounts of subsidy would depend on the design of the program, the course content, and the assessments involved. So there is no consistency or there's no relationship between the number of beneficiaries and the amount of subsidy. The members said we should have the talent serve in the industries after they have received incentives or scholarships. This has always been our intention. Whenever we have internship schemes, incentive schemes or scholarship schemes, we want them to remain in the industries. I do not have the details here, but for in service. Uh, those in service in the industries. They will, of course, will still be in the industry. For those who are taking part in internship schemes, we have provided them with opportunities of job attachments and we would provide some financial support to them so that they will continue to work in the industries. We have had a particular item with zero beneficiaries, but still has a positive amount of subsidy. So for the scheme, sometimes it may be company-based, so we have dispersed the subsidy. But once there are beneficiaries, the company can use the subsidy. So there may be uh different times for the different arrangements. Thank you, Mr. Shanghai Long. I want to ask about one oh four and one oh one on railways.
On a program two. The smart traffic fund as well as the autonomous parking system need to be used well. We need to put the technology of autonomous driving to test. This is welcomed by the industry. About one hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty million dollars of the fund are spent on the pilot project. If the secretary can issue licenses for autonomous vehicles, we need to expedite the implementation of autonomous driving. So I'd like to hear from the administration. Is there any commercial application of autonomous driving? Take Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge, it is a closed road. It is rather long. Autonomous driving is quite suitable to be applied in this section. T L B one oh four is about railways. The administration mentioned a few times to establish the railways department. Say we need the railways branch from the E M S D to support the local railway project as well. In case of any equipment failure, it is not the Transport and Logistics Bureau that responds to such incidents. So I'd like to know when the railways department will be set up. In relation to the Northern Link spur line, the M T R C L and the administration have different versions of events. Pakshakak Station in Science Park, we've been in discussion for about it for five years or so. When we re-see the commissioning of Pakshakak Station. Would it adopt the same construction mode of the racecourse station? So that it will not be part of the main line of the railway? Thank you. Regarding autonomous driving. I agree with member. Earlier on, we already have had a legislative framework. There's a lot of leeway and flexibility for the administration to expedite the implementation of the project. It's not just a pilot project. We can even put it to commercial application. We project within this year, one of the pilot projects is to connect the Hong Kong International Airport Airport City and the Hong Kong Port Artificial Island of the Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge. We aim to allow commercial operation after we have accumulated operation experience. From the airport island, the autonomous driving system will be extended to connect to Tongchung New Town. This is the plan of the Airport Authority. Mr. Shang just now also talked about other places. There are two projects being piloted, one in West Kowloon Cultural District, the other in Fairview Garden. There are minibuses being tested and we look forward to commercial operation as well. In relation to the Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge, there is room for us to explore future application. Regarding the railways department, as Mr. Shang mentioned. Yes, indeed, if we have a dedicated railways department. It will serve as a one-stop shop for the management and supervision of the railway systems in Hong Kong. But it will involve the addition of manpower and resources. We will review the need as well as the resources of the government. Under the principle of saving resources for the government, we will consider how we can strike the best balance in relation to having a dedicated railways department. Well, I'd like to supplement about Pakshakak Station in Science Park. Secretary, any response? Well, in the second quarter or in the, in the third quarter of this year, we will announce a preliminary development proposal. We still aim to commission the station as scheduled. Mr. Legion Kang, I'd like to ask about T L B one one eight and two oh seven about the intermodal transshipment mode. Many people in Guangdong Province have gone to another area, say, the western area. We have a lot of intermodal mode. Say we have the logistics park in the Hong Kong International Airport. Apart from sea-to-air model, do we have land-to-air model as well? Can we have a logistics park in Juhai or even a center for handling cargoes? So especially for cargoes in the evening, we can make good use of cargo planes in the evening so that we can provide more services, given the fact that the distance is shorter. Next, regarding two oh seven. It's about the parking spaces for school buses. As we know, the parking spaces for commercial vehicles is one to not point six. Which means there aren't enough parking spaces for C V's. Even if there are enough spaces, then C V's will also have to compete for these spaces. In the reply, I learned that school buses be the larger small. Want to be parked in schools after operating hours. But on the table, only forty schools take part in this scheme. There are total of one thousand schools in Hong Kong. The participation rate is very low. If schools are willing to provide areas for school buses to be parked, this is a win-win situation. Fewer chances of being ticketed. It will also be more convenient for school buses to pick up students. So I hope that you will be in talks with the Education Bureau to make this happen. Secretary, well, please be succinct. We still have ten members lining up waiting to speak. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Two main points. Regarding Juhai and Hong Kong, how we can enhance intermodal transshipment? We'll actively explore this issue with the Airport Authority. Next, in relation to commercial vehicles, we take a multi-pronged approach. In public housing estates. We may allow C V's to be parked in small hours. Regarding school buses. A few years ago, the Transport Department and the Education Bureau did come together to discuss whether it's possible to allow school buses to be parked in schools. This is indeed good. We'll discuss with the Education Bureau. We'll have more talks with the Education Bureau. Thank you. Next member, Mr. Andrew Lam. I'd like to follow up on my two questions. Oh, one, two, and one, seven, five. Directory post forty reduced to thirty five. One of the posts is responsible for the proposed Hong Kong Island West Hong, Hong Shui Kiu Rail Link and the artificial islands. After reduction in manpower, does it mean these projects will be shelved? Or will it be a, will there be a serious delay? Next, in relation to T L B one seven five, it's about the Traffic Data Analytics System, T D A S. In twenty twenty three, there was a paper talking about this system. Your reply is very detailed. I thank the administration for giving us a very detailed reply. In the panel meetings, we oftentimes talk about the relevant analysis system, traffic management system, traffic-like adjustment system. We oftentimes talk about these systems. You will only finish the analysis on these findings until twenty twenty seven. We are actually being very slow, but then we are in an Erag with the high-speed rail. We need to move faster. Well, I'll give the flow to the highways. Thank you, Mr. Yao. Thank you. Regarding the um one directory post, it's chief engineer. This post holder works with the Development Bureau to study the artificial island projects as well as the railway project. We didn't ask for the continuation of this post, so this um post. lapsed on the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-five. For the second question, we also reply to Mister Andrew Lam. Well, excuse me, Chairman, my first question isn't just about the artificial islands. Hong Kong. Well, actually, you mentioned several projects. Say they proposed Hong Kong Island West Hong Shui Kiu Rail Link and the possible rail links for the longer term. Does it involve other rail links? Well, possible rail links for the longer term cover from Lantau Island to artificial islands as well. What about the second part, Secretary? Thank you. I thank Mister Andrew Lam for the questions. Yes, we have a correct direction, but we do need to work faster. In our traffic and transport policy study report. We will put forward good proposals, but in the implementation of the policies, we'll have to have regard to the traffic system. We will try cautiously and we will also be quick on our pace. Mister Edmund Wong, thank you. I have two questions. One, my question. T L B oh one nine about consultancy company project. In twenty twenty-four, a total of two hundred and seventy-nine capital projects were undertaken by consultants. The administration said that a total of seventeen consultants were involved. That is sixteen contracts or projects. I've done some calculation. Did you take the initiative to look for more tenders? It seems there are quite a lot of such projects in the past five years. One consultancy company didn't meet the requirement, so the projects were absorbed by other consultants. What is the existing mechanism? What is the rule? My another question is T L B oh one one. It's about road maintenance. There's a surge in the num in the number of complaints about road maintenance. The um government said that the road conditions give rise to the surge in the number of complaints. The administration talked about wear and tear alongside daily use in relation to the road surfaces of road facilities. The administration said that, starting from April this year, more durable asphalt will be used. I'd like to know the um rising cost. Secretary? Thank you. In the reply, we provided some figures. A total of two hundred and seventy-nine capital projects undertaken by some consultants. It's about the Universal Accessibility Program. Consultants are responsible for an elevator or an elevator tower and a footbridge. When there are tenders, there are different factors at play. In relation to the quarterly assessment out of seventeen consultants. One consultant failed the um assessment in twenty twenty-one. We adopt a two-envelope approach, one on the technical aspect, two on the cost aspect. Experience, understanding of the project, manpower resources, experience in the past or performance in the past, rather, all these are factors at play. After this rating, we will add it to the tender, and that's how we arrive at a total figure or a total rating.
On paving materials. We had more complaints on different sections of a road. So it shows people's concerns on road maintenance. Indeed, as Mister Edmund Wong said, we now have new materials for paving, we have new bituminous materials as well as new asphalt. And we have developed a new material with bituminous material with the polyu, and we will start using them on first of April this year. At first, the cost may be higher, but with full use of the materials, we should be able to drive down the costs for the bituminous materials. Thank you. Mister Chan Pu-Lung, excuse me. I want to ask about one four five, my question on northbound travel for Hong Kong vehicles. It says that as at February twenty twenty-five, we have already had one hundred and forty thousand permits issued and eighty thousand were still valid as at twenty-eighth of February twenty twenty-five. And we have a total number of unilateral recognition policies issued by Hong Kong insurance companies, about ten thousand, so comparing the two figures, it's just around ten percent. It's quite low. This is a breakthrough policy to arrange for insurance for cross-boundary vehicles. It also has a significant meaning for the integration of Bay Area. It seems that we're not achieving the policy objectives, however. I think one barrier is vehicle examination. For the vehicles participating in the scheme, they need to go to the Designated Vehicle Examination Centers. And these organizations would facilitate the drivers to purchase, the owners to purchase mainland insurance, but Hong Kong insurance companies may not be able to take place. For northbound travel for Macau vehicles, they have faced a similar difficulty, but it seems that they are not faced with as much challenge in terms of insurance. So what is the government's stance on this? And on vehicle examination arrangements, we have very stringent standards for vehicle examination in both Hong Kong and the mainland. Is it possible that we can have mutual recognition so as to provide more convenience to drivers? I also want to ask about one five five, Chow Su, Mister Chow Su Chong's questions on importation of drivers. I have some questions about the reply in particular. It says the Transport Department does not have a relevant figures of the drivers involved and any contraventions or accidents. I find it to be impossible because they have registrations, right? You should have relevant day data, and I think the public wants to know for their benefit to make sure these drivers can drive safely. Thank you. Secretary, I will answer the first two questions and then I'll let the Commissioner for Transport answer the remaining question. On northbound travel for Hong Kong vehicles, I have been liaising with the member and other stakeholders on this. We did hear feedback that people want us to provide more convenience for taking out insurance. We know that there is mostly a large company doing vehicle examination at the moment. And we have been working with mainland authorities, in particular the mainland customs. We want to have some barriers broken. We want to make sure there is convenience with vehicle examination as well as the taking out of insurance. Now. I believe the industry, the insurance industry has to also provide competitive products in order to be attractive to the participants of the scheme. We are soon going to launch the arrangements for self-bound travel for Guangdong vehicles, and we would have to also think about vehicle examination. And we most likely will need some sort of mutual recognition to provide convenience to residents on both sides. And perhaps we can have more diversified insurance products from mainland and local insurance companies. This is something that we have been thinking about and for future vehicle examination arrangements in the mainland, we are collecting information and discussing the potential arrangements with the relevant authorities. I think you can provide written response on the second question, please. Next to speak, Doctor Lo Wei Quang. Thank you. I have a question that is relevant to the speech made by the secretary in the opening remarks made by the secretary in paragraph three. It says that the administration is working with the Shenzhen authorities to jointly take forward the two cross-boundary railway projects. One is the Hong Shui Kiu link and the other one is the Northern Link. Honestly. I think we knew this from the very beginning. When we had the twenty fourteen Railway Development Strategy. We have expressed disappointment about shelving the Hong the Hong Shui Kiu project. And now that we're launching the project again, of course, we're happy, but we are far behind. We need to catch up with lost time. We need to have the restrictions relaxed. Right now for the Hong Kong section of the express rail link, we needed to have a tunnel between Maipo and Huanggang. And we had to start from Huanggang, so you couldn't have those in Hong Kong working there, right? And if people had to develop this section from Huanggang, they would eventually need to get to the Hong Kong section. But then we would need to import the workers in order to allow them to work here, and we had faced difficulties in facilitating the arrangements, and that took much time. For Hong Kong-Shenzhen project, it is a project that would demonstrate collaboration between professionals on the on both sides. I think we really need to relax the restrictions, and I think it's not just on the part of the bureau. We need to relax the restrictions by working with different departments and bureaus, including the Labor and Welfare Bureau, to make sure we won't see the same thing happen again. Thank you. Secretary, let's not say what is in the past, we should look to the future. For the Shanghai section of the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Railway Project, we will try to adopt an innovative model. We have set up an office with Shenzhen authorities to implement the cross-boundary railway projects. Specifically, the Office for Implementing Cross-Boundary Railway Projects. We do understand that the mainland is very knowledgeable about railway projects, but we also have our standards and expertise. I think we can work together and try to enhance efficiency by adopting national standards and making use of their advanced technologies. As for manpower, say at Deep Bay, the tunnel would go from Shenzhen to Hong Kong. If we're to bore the tunnel, do we need to draw a line between the two sites? It is something to think about. I think we can have a starting point to engage Shenzhen, the Shenzhen side, to bore the tunnel for us as well. But of course, we need to seek a breakthrough with the team and the arrangements. We hope that with better arrangements, we can catch up with lost time. Thank you. Mister Gary Jack, thank you. I want to ask about one nine nine and two one nine. Let me first ask about two one nine. I can see in the reply, it says that for trains that have a delay of five minutes or more, there is no relevant information. But in the first question, it said that punctuality is very important for M T R passengers. If punctuality is so important, you should know how much trains are late and how many passengers are affected, because this will help you gauge how many passengers are affected. Now, you did say that there should be a ninety-eight percent target, but I think it does not match with what you said for not having the number of passengers affected. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to say that you have met the ninety-eight percent target. So if you are talking about, say, nine point ninety-nine point nine percent punctuality, you will only have, say, less than one thousand passengers affected. So if you don't have the relevant information, it does not make sense. So can you elaborate on this? Now, I want to ask about one nine nine. I am most concerned about congestion on the East Rail Line. So you would derive the ratio. Basically, we have twenty-two trains during peak hours for the East Rail Line, but I understand that the T L B said before that you can have twenty-four trains per hour. So why are there two trains less? Because with two trains less, you will be able to, you can't carry as many passengers, you'll miss eight thousand to ten thousand passengers. And right now, the loading is ninety-four percent. It seems that we need more trains. Why aren't you doing that? And I understand that right now, even at peak hours, we would have for the new train seventy-five percent loading, so we should use more new trains. I understand that Ku Tong Station will be commissioned in one or two years. And from a previous paper, it says that with Ku Tong Station, the capacity of East Rail Line would increase by another fifty percent. So should we ask the M T R C L to have buy to buy new trains now in order to cater for the increased demand for from Ku Tong and neighboring areas? All right, can you please answer B T L B one nine nine now and provide written response to the other questions? Thank you, Secretary. Thank you. I think the member is indeed correct in his observations. We have been talking to the M T R C L on the current situation of the East Rail Line and to make sure they are prepared for the commissioning of Ku Tong Station and state the connection between Ku Tong Station and East Rail Line. Next, Professor Chairman Kong.
Thank you. I'd like to ask about one six oh and one six one. It's about the um boundary construction fee. We have the Ministry of Commerce representative with us. We need to make breakthroughs and put in place measures in phases in order to facilitate traffic across the boundary. But afterwards, we can see afterwards, we saw the imposition of the boundary construction fee. Well, it's actually under the purview of the F S T B, and I shouldn't Well, it's actually under the purview of the F S T B and I shouldn't pursue the secretary for this. I understand that it's expected to have a revenue of one billion Hong Kong dollars. But there will be a reduction in the number of cars coming to Hong Kong, there will also be loss of business receipts. It may be as many as billions of dollars, we may end up losing. I asked the Security Bureau as well. The Huanggang um B C P reconstruction redevelopment project is being undertaken by the Shenzhen side. For the other B C Ps, there aren't any charges on these B C Ps. There's a vehicle license fee for all vehicles in Hong Kong. Feel there is a hundred percent um tax concession as well. I'd like to appeal to the um bureau to take into account these factors as well. Can you reduce the construction fees and that might be bringing you more revenue than one billion dollars arising from the boundary facility fees? Next, T L B one six one. Operation revenue tunnels, there are toll-free tunnels and told tunnels. In twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the overall operation expenditure. Is thirty million to fifty million dollars more. For toll-free tunnel, the levels are rather more stable, why is that? First, on the boundary facility fee, the F S T B is looking into this measure seriously. Concerns and views from different quarters of society will be taken into account. High-speed rail roads, maritime transport. We enhance our connectivity with different cities in the G B A through these means. We will enhance our efforts in relation to improving the connectivity between Hong Kong and other G B A cities. On the review done by the F S T B, there are different figures collected by the governments. All these will be factored in as well. We have taken Professor Chow's point, next in relation to told tunnels. There will be new systems and electronic equipments. We also take into account the inflation factor. So when it comes to building, operation, management, we look for repair and maintenance contractors through open tendering. So there may be fluctuations in the prices as time um moves on. T L B oh oh five, T L B one four O, Doctor Ben Chen, please. Oh oh five is about the road service paving materials. Contractors are working on the road services of um highways. The paving materials make the road surfaces not even. In some sections, there is wear and tear and it takes a long time for them to be repaired and maintained. I wonder what difficulties stand in the way. Of course, when the materials are improved, as the administration said, they are working with the Poly U to work on some new materials. This is indeed very good. Only two K Ms of road can be closed. How will the government ensure when it comes to highways? In the course of repair and maintenance, there is sufficient time for contractors to conduct works in relation to repair and maintenance. Next, about parking spaces, that is T L B one four O. All over the years, we work very hard to provide more parking spaces, especially for C V's, lorries and so on. But in the administration's response in twenty twenty-four. The parking spaces for lorries actually decreased comparing with twenty twenty-three. Didn't we work very hard to increase the number of parking spaces for C V's? Why did the number decrease? How will the government improve the provision of parking spaces for C V's? How can we ensure sufficient parking spaces for C V's? There's indeed a serious lack of parking spaces for C V's. So what bold move does the administration have so that there will be a reasonable number of parking spaces for C V's? Secretary, thank you. On road repair and maintenance, I'll give the flow to the highways. On the parking spaces for C V's. Some are short-term tendencies, S T T. These pieces of land may be resumed for long-term purposes. And this will result in a drop in the number of C V parking spaces. But we've been working very hard on planning standards. We will continue to enhance our efforts in our planning standards. There are loading and unloading spaces on the roadside and in the evening, they may become parking spaces for C V's. We also have a policy in the future when there are S T Ts. A certain number of um parking spaces need to be provided for not just private cars, but also for commercial vehicles. We need to be flexible in public housing estates, for instance. We explore with the Housing Bureau to provide. Daytime parking spaces for C V's or for visitors. In the evening, these spaces can be vacated for nighttime parking for C V's. We want a diversified policy. We'll go along towards providing um parking spaces for C V's. Mister Yao, may you provide a written reply on the road services? Thank you, Mister Perry Yu. I'd like to follow up on negotiations in relation to civil aviation. As well as the sector's specific labor importation scheme for the transport sector. I can see that the administration is working very hard to have ten more civil aviation partners by twenty twenty. By the, by the end of twenty twenty-five, this will cement our position as an international aviation hub. I'd like to follow up on T L B one two seven, it's my question. I am concerned about the competitiveness of the airport as well as the transportation at the airport. At the end of last month, the Guangdong Province published the High Quality Development Action Plan for the next three years. Shenzhen, Bao'an. And Guangzhou. They want to build a cluster of airports together with Bao'an International Airport and Baiyuan International Airport in Guangzhou. And we are expediting the construction of Hong Kong-Shenzhen West Rail Link, Hongshui Q Tianhai Section. This will connect us to Shenzhen-Bao'an International Airport. In a northern metropolis, for residents in the N M to go to Shenzhen. It will be even more convenient for them to go to Shenzhen to fly instead of coming to Hong Kong International Airport to fly. We do need to plan ahead for the central artificial islands. We don't know what um, how it will be developed in the future. But will it go through Sunny Bay? You need to plan Sunny Bay first. Or it may be, or it will probably go through Asia Expo. G B A through sea, land, air. Using the Hong Kong International Airport to go in and out of Hong Kong and to fly leaving Hong Kong. The increase in the number of visitors is very good, fifty percent more than that seen in last year. Accounting for sixteen percent of the passenger throughput last year. It shows that our policies are effective. The T L B should discuss with. The F S T B in relation to A D P T or A P D T. Thank you, Mister Perry Yu, for your questions. Members are concerned about the connectivity of the airport. We do want to provide services to more passengers. We want more people to use the Hong Kong Airport. Regarding the Tian- Hongshui Q Tianhai section of the Hong Kong-Shenzhen West Rail Link, we have conducted the investigation. Connecting to Bao'an International Airport in the north or in the south connecting to Hong Kong International Airport. We will take into account the compatibility as well. Interchange arrangements are involved, power supply, train systems. We need to take into account all these as well. In relation to sea transport, there's a Skype here right now. The number of passengers is increasing. The airport authority or local airlines, we have discussed with them. In Guangzhou. There are important conventions or exhibitions. We want to provide more services and make it more convenient. Well, Mister Joffrey Lam, three minutes, as we'll have to go to another conference room for the replies. I'll ask the administration to provide a written reply, thank you. Our country supports Hong Kong to be developed into eight centers, including International Shipping Center. Just now, the secretary mentioned that the F S set in the budget. That Hong Kong will be developing the first aircraft um parts handling center in Asia. I'm glad to see that an agreement has been signed. Aircraft, parts dismantling, manpower training, these will be provided. What resources will the government use? To facilitate this measure, save land, monetary resources and so on. We do need land. The Hong Kong Aviation, International Aviation Academy is. Going to work with the government to provide training. Do we need to abide by all commercial, abide by commercial principles? Or can we make it flexible to cater for investors, or we still have sufficient time, secretary, please? Well, I do believe Mister Joffrey Lam wants an oral reply. I'm glad to see that a France company has chosen Hong Kong to be the first aircraft parts processing and trading center in Asia. This shows Hong Kong is an international aviation hub. Passenger and cargo throughput are important. But we do need to attract enterprises and talents at the same time. Technology, talents, land, we work harder with the Airport Authority and other policy bureaus. We work with them proactively to engage in discussions. We want to provide assistance on different fronts. We also want them to help Hong Kong to cement our position as an international aviation hub. When it comes to financial arrangements, I believe. We have a good financial system, we have a robust one. We have good banks, different financing tools and so on. I believe. We will provide financial assistance into Sagan. When we work on these projects, policy support is important. But at the same time, commercial principles shouldn't be overlooked either. The Airport Authority has been abiding by these principles, these two are not mutually exclusive. We do have flexibility and room to explore collaboration. Ultimately. We want to be able to explain to the public in relation to financial sustainability and commercial operability. We need to keep financial risks in check. We also want to make a positive impact. Then we can live up to our country's expectation of developing ourselves into an international aviation hub. Our next session will start at ten fifty-five, this is the end of this session, thank you.